Questions? Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question.
Evelyn Slotbarrow, 43, Thunderhead Place. 16P addition, co-curricular activity and assignment, the addition of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. My concern arises with the mission statement that I got off their website. To present to coaches and athletes and all whom they influence the challenging adventure of receiving Jesus Christ as Savior and Lord, serving Him in their relationships and in the fellowship of the Church. I am Christian by background, however, is this more of a club or is this more of a ministry and a missionary background to this? And I do not want it to be exclusionary because there are religions that do not believe in Jesus Christ. So, most of the clubs that we have pretty much encompass everyone. If we were creating a club that promoted unity with everyone's faith, I would be all on board with that. But my concern lies with their mission statement and the influence that other students may attempt to have over their peers, swaying them in one direction or another.
May I?
Certainly.
Great question. So I'm going to start with the end of mine. Sometimes we have to agree to disagree about what we think about things. Back in the, I'd say the end of the school year, beginning of the summer, Mr. Pascal got a request from a student for consideration of this club. And although we've never had it before, if a request is made at the end of the summer, Mr. Pascal usually talks to all those people who could perhaps be involved before giving a yes or no. Because it was the end of the summer and all those people he would typically talk to weren't around, he really waited to almost the end of the summer, beginning of the school year. When we didn't react in time to the request of a student to formulate this, the student or rather the idea of this club lawyered up. So I received a message from an attorney that said, exactly what is it that you're doing with our request? And why aren't you considering our request? And if you don't consider our request, it's against the law and we will sue you. So once I get that, it's now out of my hands and it goes straight to our attorney. And our attorney then needs to give us guidance because our job is to make sure that the board is protected. That's one side of it. The other side of our job is to make sure that no student is excluded from any of it. We have other non-curricular clubs. The Gay Straight Alliance is one of those things. And you could argue that every student couldn't have the opportunity to be part of that. And you'd be right. In a case like this, if you read the resolution that we put in place, we didn't say advisor. We didn't say that Mr. Diaz was going to turn around and advise the group as to what to do during non-instructional times. This doesn't occur during the day. It's before school, it's during lunch, or it's after school. We said supervisor. And he understands, based on a conversation that he had with Mr. Pascal and I today, exactly what his role is. These students absolutely, based on the Equal Access Act, have the opportunity to participate in this, and we can't, other than being sued, deny them of that. Hence, the reason is before the board this evening.
Okay. And just if there do arise any concerns with issues with students out of this club, how would that be handled?
Same thing, same thing you do with every other issue that you may have. You go to Mr. Pascal. If it's a teacher issue, you go to the teacher. If that doesn't work out, you go to the supervisor. If that doesn't work out, right? You can go to the assistant principal or you can go to the principal. You follow the chain of command. The last thing that you should probably do, Mrs. Slotbarrow, and you've heard me say this enough, is to come to me in front of the board because I will have the least amount of information to give you an informative answer. I end up having to go back to John at the end of this meeting, texting him on the way home, which I shouldn't be doing, right? To get an answer so that I can get back to you quickly. That was a joke.
Okay. So if a parent does have an issue, they should contact Mr. Pascal.
Absolutely. And you're going to hear from Mr. Pascal exactly what I said publicly this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is John Feeden. I live at 20 Falcon Court in Maua, right over here in Fardale. And I've been at the resident for 37 years, and this is my first BOE meeting. So, kind of cool.
Want to sit here?
Peter's already given me a Mr. Goodbar. But I read in the paper, and it concerns me, about the situation that we're having in Maua with these e-bus that are coming across from Rockland County and the no-knock ordinances and the use of the parks and the playgrounds. And that's concerning, mainly because I kind of know a little bit about what's happening and what's happened in East Rappo School System, where money has been diverted, where the students don't get an education. So my question to you guys today is, is this subject on the radar screen? Because to me, the school system is extremely important. I remember when I first moved here, I've lived in Bergen County all my life, but when I first moved here, I said to my friends, "I live in Maua." And people went, "Oh, really? You can't get into Whitecroft like Brian?" You know, you couldn't get to Ramsey, you know? It wasn't so good. But now, it's great. So I don't want it to go from great to good. I want it to go better and excellent. So is this on the radar screen?
We all agree with you, and it's all on our radar screen. Everyone here knows about the issues in Rappo. We're cognizant of it, and we have our eyes open and our ears open, and we are not going to let Maua turn into anything other than what it is and let it become even greater than it is right now.
Are you in touch with the mayor and the council? Do you guys talk?
We do. Yes, we do.
They don't talk to each other, so.
Yeah, we actually do talk here to each other. And we do reach out to them, and they reach out to us. They have a liaison too.
All right. So can you go to sleep tonight feeling comfortable?
Yes, you can. You must definitely can.
And thank you for the Goodbar.
And thank you for coming to me. Is anyone else? Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Actually, we only have one thing tonight, and if the board looks at and to the audience, what you are looking at primarily is your administrative team, second to none, that are here to support their colleagues in providing a 2017 testing report, which we are required to do within 60 days of release of those results. We have Kevin Olmer, who's the principal of GW. We have Dominic Caliata, who is our director of guidance. Both are specialists and experts in regard to testing presentation. So with that said, it's all yours, guys. And you look very nice tonight.
We're matching.
Kind of match.
Of course, good evening. It's, I have to click it. I'm just going to.
You got it, Carlos. Thank you. Great to see everyone tonight. Dominic and I have been up here for quite a while together, because this is our seventh year doing this presentation together. And we're actually on the phone today and talking a little bit about how easy.
Had to get that in, Kevin. What's that? Seven years.
Seven?
Yeah, you had to get that in.
Seven, seven wonderful years. But talking about how easy it is now to make this presentation, not because we've been doing it for so long, but because of the type of school community that we're in. And certainly, we often have much to celebrate, but we also know that when there are challenges, we have a team of people here and a team of people here that are committed to make sure that we overcome those challenges. So we're going to look at some data tonight, talk about some of the tests that our students participate in. And I just always say, keep in mind, right? And when we look at these numbers, it's easy sometimes to forget that we're not a manufacturer. We're not, we're not putting on a product that we're dealing with kids. And we're helping kids grow in every way, academically and socially. So our job, so scores may fluctuate year to year, scores may fluctuate grade to grade, but that's indicative of the children that we're dealing with and human nature. So this kind of outlines the assessment program last year, of course, because this is reporting on last year's results. Students participating in the Park Assessment, which was the major assessment that the state gives in both English language arts and math in grades three through 11. Right now, we do not have that district factor group comparison or peer-school comparison that's not provided to us at this time. We'll see in the future if we're able to gather data from that. I know a lot of times, it's just districts working together and sharing results, and then we're able to compare kind of apples to apples in terms of school systems with similar socioeconomic statuses. There's some science tests that we'll talk about tonight a little bit that some students participated in. And also, there's a little bit of data on students that participate in alternative assessments, and those are students that have significant academic challenges, significant disabilities, and they don't participate in the traditional state assessment. There's alternate assessments for them. Just the last note on the bottom is, I think, a note of importance that, beginning with the class of 2021, which is our current ninth grade, all of those students right now, according to the state of New Jersey, must pass the Grade 10 Park ELA and Park Algebra I as part of their graduation requirement. These are the standardized tests from last year, so all students were asked to participate in these assessments. We have the Park, NJAS Science, Biology Test, and the last two are those tests for students with significant disabilities. This year, New Jersey is going to be replacing the NJAS and the Biology Test. Not quite sure what that test will look like yet. The state's still going to roll out all that information to us. Throughout our presentation, you're going to see some bar graphs that compare results. So the reason for the colors there are these are the Park participating states from last year. When we see our bar graph, and it's a purple bar, that's all of these states, the average put together, and New Jersey will be in green on a separate bar, but New Jersey is inclusive of that purple bar that we'll see on these graphs. Here we start off talking a little bit about our participation rates, and we broke it down between grades three through nine. Because the students that are part of these grades right here are students that will be required to either take or pass Park in order to graduate. So we see we have a very high participation rate in these grades, which I think is certainly a testament to our schools getting the word out to parents in terms of the importance of participating in the exam, our parents really being receptive in terms of whether or not they agree or disagree with Park, knowing and understanding that it is a graduation requirement that is here right now and that students must participate in the assessment. When we look at grades 10 through 11, you're going to see a dip in the participation, a significant dip in grade 11. And that is because in these grades, 11th grade, a large majority of students that did not need to participate in Park in order to graduate, did not need to pass a Park Assessment in order to graduate, they were able to choose from a menu of different assessments and read a minimum proficiency standard in order to meet their graduation requirement. Dom, I don't know if you want to talk more about in terms of what their choices were.
So the 10th, 11th grade students in that grad, in that cohort, in those cohorts could take the SAT, ACT, PSAT to show proficiency for graduation. They weren't, they weren't bound by the Park. Particularly in 11th grade, you see the number, the number of valid scores of students who participated, 54 of class 223. A large chunk of those students, a good portion, were taking AP English, so they were automatically removed. Advanced math classes, pre-calculus, calculus, calculus AB, so they didn't have to take the Algebra II Park. So students realized that they didn't have to participate in the Park, so they chose not to test.
Well, sorry, if I look at our Park Mathematics Assessment, grades three, four, and five, so you see grade three on the left, working over to grade five on the right. The blue bar represents Maua and the percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations. Park has a scale of one through five. Scores four and five are meet, score four is meeting expectations, five is exceeding expectations. So this is the total of both of those categories. The number in black is a number of percentage points that we were above the state. So you can see in grade three, we had 77% of our students meet or exceed expectations. The state had 53% of the students meet or exceed expectations, so we were above the state proficiency level by 24%. Grade four, similar results in terms of that comparison, and certainly, very similar also in grade five. So again, blue being Maua, green is the state of New Jersey, and purple is the average of all of those states that were shown that participated in Park on that initial slide. Moving on to grades six, seven, and eight. You'll see a very similar percentage in sixth grade in terms of that proficiency above the state level. In grade seven, you'll see a fairly similar rate. In grade eight, a little bit of a dip. We do have a large portion of our eighth grade students that participate in either the Algebra Assessment or Geometry Assessment. And I think you'll see that the results, when I show you the results on the next slide, you'll see an increase kind of in the percentage of our proficiency above the state due to a lot of those students participating in those assessments.
So real quick, the numbers that we're seeing are not necessarily the percentage of students who participated as percentage of students in that class. So there may be, it may be, and I'm just pulling numbers, 50% didn't participate, so our maximum number might be 50%. Is that?
No, your maximum number is still 100%.
No, what I'm saying, 100%, if 50% didn't participate, the maximum we're going to see here is 50% if everybody met, everybody who tested met standards.
What this is, is their, their individual assessment. So grade six has their own math assessment, grade seven has their own math assessment, grade eight has their own math assessment. Students that are participating in Algebra will take an Algebra I Assessment.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. So I'm not looking at this saying, oh my God, you know, only 39% of our eighth graders met expectations.
That is, 39% of our eighth graders who participated in that assessment.
That's correct. Right. So what Rick's asking is, of the population that took that assessment, 39% met or exceeded expectations.
Correct.
So what, and what is that, how many?
Or is that portion of students?
How many, how many participants? So we had, let's say we had 200 eighth graders, how many took that test?
I'm just going to look for it, okay?
Okay.
So you look at, so 102 eighth graders participated in that grade eight assessment.
So 39% of the 102 met or exceeded.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, but if we look back to, I'm sorry.
Right there is where we're at.
Right. So if we go now to the next slide.
Yep. So now you're going to see our Algebra I Assessment, our Geometry Assessment, and Algebra II Assessments, where Maua scored well above the state on all three of those tests. And our eighth graders were participants in both the Algebra I Assessment and some eighth graders in the Geometry Assessment.
So, but if we normalized the eighth grade math results, we brought together the math assessment, Algebra, and Geometry, the total population, I don't know, what's the total population in the eighth grade roughly?
Two fifty-three.
It was 253.
253. So if we said, but only 102 took that assessment exclusively, but if we added the students who took these exams to that group, what would the total profile be?
So in the eighth grade, of the 110 students who took the Algebra and the Geometry Assessment in the eighth grade, of the, every single Geometry student scored a four or most likely a five, and all but two of the Algebra students too scored a three. The other 80 in the cohort scored a four or a five.
Right. So if we did like a stacked bar graph for that other slide, our 39 wouldn't look that bad. But out of 102, that's 60-some-odd kids, 61, 62 kids who didn't meet that. So, and if the total class size is 253, do the math now, 60 out of 253 is your fallout rate, plus the fallout rate from here. You know what I'm saying?
We do.
Okay. Do we know what that answers? So we could figure that, we could calculate.
We could calculate that. I don't have that for you right now in terms of a specific percentage. Obviously, it's much higher than if we look at the eighth grade class, than 39% of eighth grade students, regardless of the assessment they take, being proficient on the Park Assessment.
Yeah, because that, that looks not rosy.
But it's also is only exclusive, like I said. And that's the same in any, any town that you're in. If they have students in middle school that are participating in those assessments.
Right. And as you can see, the state and the other state.
I just wanted to make sure that people maybe watching at home on Miss Slotbarrow's, you know, the video aren't looking, "Wow, that's great. 39% are doing what?"
Our eighth graders are doing very well in math, and actually, we have such a high percentage of students that are taking advanced math classes. That's why you see these fantastic results when we move on to this next slide.
Thank you.
So I know there's a lot of information on this table. This just looks at every grade level in terms of mathematics, and I talked about the scores being broken down on a scale of one through five. So this is the percentage of students on each assessment that had that specific score. On the column to the far right is just what you have seen in the bar graphs in terms of that proficiency level for students that met and exceeded expectations. So give you a chance, obviously, to look at that.
So the 291 for Algebra I includes eighth grade students plus ninth grade students?
And seventh grade students.
And seventh grade. So again, if we teased that out and we made a stacked bar on that other graph, we would come up with a totally different story for eighth grade math.
Oh, absolutely. And if you look at the number, again, Mr. VanderWaal said there's 253 students in the grade, in grade eight class, you had 102 who took the grade eight Park. That means you had almost 150 students.
Right.
Who are taking advanced math.
Right.
So those students aren't even put into this population, but there are leaps and bounds ahead of where they should be. And you see the numbers that they're putting up.
Right, right. Yeah, that's admirable.
I think the important thing is, Mike, is that we need to look at it as a whole, not individually. We need to look at the eighth grade class in its entirety.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
It's very important that we do it, because Kevin said it, Dom just did the same thing. We're doing very well. But if you look at that 39, you think there's 61% of our kids are doing lousy, and that's not an accident.
If you add those 150 students who are taking Algebra I, the Park Assessment.
Yeah, if you layered them in and said, here's the Algebra, here's the Geometry, here's the total who met or exceeded either one of those three standards, the Park, Algebra, or Geometry, then that number would be much higher.
Next slide, we report on students with disabilities in a separate slide. That's a requirement of the state. So here you'll see a breakdown of all students that had special programs and had individual education plans are reported here. So you see, obviously, a much smaller number of valid test scores for this population because there's a small number of students there. And then we have their proficiency levels listed there on our chart. Traditionally, obviously, assessment for students that are classified and have some challenges. Academically, this assessment is going to be very, very challenging because it's at grade level standards. Typically, if you are a classified student, you have shown over time that the challenges that you have are not right at this point, allowing you to meet grade level standards.
Do we have comparative state and partner tests?
In terms for students with disabilities?
Yeah.
I don't believe we have that right now, but typically, the state releases more data as the year progresses.
I'm impressed by the geometry number. I mean, you have almost 42% in the partial meeting. I mean, that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, what we're moving up to, right? The goal is for every student, we look at them individually, and we want them to grow.
Right.
And certainly, that's the type of data that we really are interested in, starting to dive down into, to make sure that we look at each student as an individual, as a unique person, and look at their growth and make sure that over time, they're continuing to progress over to those scores on the right as far as they can go. We'll move over to our English Park Exam, again, grades three, four, and five. Very similar to our math results in terms of our percentage that met and exceeded expectations in terms of that comparison to the state. Grades six, seven, and eight.
And how do, how do these scores compare to last year's results?
They're all within, I would say, five percentage points either way.
Plus or minus?
Yeah. So they're relatively close. This is really, if we look at last year's assessment, this year's assessment, they're the two closest that we have in terms of comparison. The first year part was basically a completely different test, so you kind of have to throw that one out. So we're looking at kind of two years of data right now.
I was just going to add in that we're also dealing with two different variables, right? We have two different classes. So to compare a class against another class, although the test may have remained the same, doesn't necessarily mean that the students and their abilities did.
Right. But we can compare like grade eight versus last year, grade seven.
Yes.
See how well they sat.
Yes. And they're the closest, right?
Right. And you see grades nine, 10, and 11. 11, we spoke to when we talked about that participation piece. There were only 54 11th graders that participated in the assessment.
Because they took alternative tests. So again, if we did a sort of a stacked bar, we could get a better picture of the totality of the 11th grade.
Absolutely. And if you're looking at the 11th grades from an English standpoint, though, there was 42 senior, 42 juniors who took the AP exam. And those students got a 4.2 out of five. So the Park Test would be something very, wouldn't be challenging for them at all. If you had those 42 kids who were going to get five, that number jumps significantly.
Right, right.
And for the grade 11 assessment, we did have over 45% of the students that were students with disabilities participating in this grade 11 assessment. So when you look at that percentage piece of 54 students, you're looking 30-some-odd students that are students with disabilities that participated. Typically, that's way more in terms of percentage than would be in comparison to a grade 10 or grade nine or grade eight. Typically, we're usually around at each grade level, 15% or so students are classified. Here's our giant data table again, showing our percentage of proficiency and the scores at each level, one through five. I think really a significant number of students achieving at the highest level when we look at our English, London Arts Exam.
Is the grade valid score also influenced by other alternative exams?
And again, looking at students with disabilities, reported out. This is one of the tests that our students with the most significant challenges participated instead of Park. So you'll just see participation rates at these grade levels, so students, grade three through 11, the number of students that participated in these assessments is there listed on our chart. So a very small portion of our students, each of these children have a really specialized program where they're working on goals that are really specific to their needs. And certainly, I think when we look at our specialized population, regardless if they're taking Park or they're taking Dynamic Learning Maps, with this being in that, it really is about monitoring their progress with multiple measures and looking at their goals and objectives that they have in their individual programs. And we're very, very proud of our students there and the progress they made towards those individual goals. Like I said, the last year of the NJAS Science Assessment for grades four and eight, where we do have a district factor group comparison, which is in orange there, that would be kind of our peer group in terms of socioeconomic status. And in both cases, Maua outperformed the district factor group as well as the state. Moving forward, the word right now is that grades five, eight, and 11 will be tested Our APA Science Assessment is that alternative for the New Jersey AS, just like the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Maps, was the alternative to the Park. So again, you see a very small number of students participating in that assessment.
And this, the NJ Biology Test, is to give it to all ninth grade students. And like Kevin said, this will be the last year that this test will be utilized. So if our students are scoring 80%, we're showing proficient, advanced proficient in comparison to the state. So our graduation rate, our graduation rate has remained consistent, around 97% of our The SAT, I felt bad for the class 2017, because they were kind of the guinea pigs. They were the first class to have the choice between the old SAT out of 2,400 with the three sections, with the math, critical reading and writing, and the new test. So even this data, you can't really compare from year to year, because 2015, 2016 was considered the old test out of 2,400, and this year is the new test of, out of 1,600, where the SAT concorded those scores and eliminated the writing. But you still see that the math, our math scores of a 606, 537 for the state, 588 for evidence-based reading and writing, and our overall score is 1190, math and verbal, math and evidence-based reading and writing, which is about 115 points, 115 points higher than the state. So our students are still doing well, whichever test you give them. ACT, colleges will accept either the SAT or the ACT. Our students are getting a little more comfortable with the ACT. We've added an ACT class after school for students for preparation. You see the numbers from 2016, 2017. The ACT tests math, English, reading, and science, and then the average of those four scores can create, create the composite. And you see that our composite score of a 24.3 is above the state. When we have students apply to college, we have, we give them the option. We try to help students take both the SAT. We try to help students take both the SAT and the ACT, and then we put it on a table and say, which one is better? The SAT score or the ACT? And then the student will make the choice whether they want the SAT or the ACT. If you look at this ACT score of 24.3, it equates to an 1190, which is the same score as the SAT. So if students are hitting the mark, if you put the two tests together, the numbers are exactly the same. Now, if we're going to compare test scores, like Kevin said, we have the part, which has been going for about three years, and test is still in its infancy. The first year, you can't really count. SAT, they just changed. ACT, we're getting a little more comfortable. But there's a saying that says, you know, it doesn't matter where you start, it's how you finish. I think if we're going to look at scores, and we look at the quality of students that we have in our district, this is the place that you really want to look. Advanced placement classes, okay? AP is run by the College Board. Students are enrolled in an AP class, and they can take the AP test. And last year, in the class 2017, we had 233 students, individual students, who were enrolled in an AP class and then took the AP test. Of those 233 students, almost 90 percent scored a 3, 4, or 5. Now, if a student scores a 3, 4, or 5, they can get college credit. We've had students who have graduated a year early, or a semester early, if they've taken four, five, six, seven, eight AP classes, and the colleges will accept their credit. So you're looking at these students, these 233 students. Of these 233 students, that is 33 percent of our high school population. The AP is only given to 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders. So 33 percent of our population is taking advanced college-level courses. If you drill down even further, of those 233, 140 are seniors. So 55 percent of our senior class, over half of our senior class, is taking advanced-level courses. Not only are they taking the courses, they're taking the test, and they're scoring at a rate of 90 percent, which is absolutely phenomenal. Now, unlike other districts, Mawa High School requires students, if you're enrolled in an AP class, you are taking the AP exam. Other districts don't require students to take the AP exam, but our students do. So we have students who challenge themselves and then perform. So if you look at the state average, the state average is 70.8 percent, or we're scoring at 90 percent. Now, the thing about the AP, and why I'm putting so much stress on this test, because unlike the part, when we're talking about the part, we're talking about nine states. When we're talking about the AP test, we're talking about 50 states across the country. When I give the AP exam to our students, the AP language exam at 8 o'clock in the morning, they're taking the same exam at 8 o'clock in Seattle, in Washington, and every other state, and every other city in the country at the same exact time. The average, the national average for students to score 3, 4, or 5 on an AP exam is 60 percent across the country. We're scoring at 90. And that's a number we can relatively hit, and all our students are taking. We had 233 students take 513 exams in 24 subjects. So if we're looking at scores, and we're looking at how our kids end up, and I think the important thing to remember, the AP is the last test they'll take. They take this in May of their senior year. So after everything's said and done, after they've run the gamut of K through 12 through Mawa, this is what our kids are doing. 55 percent of our seniors are scoring at that rate. And these are the subject tests. These are the actual individual subjects. I want to point out the environmental science. And you say, why am I pointing out the 2.5? We don't even offer an AP Environmental Science class. So we have students who enrolled in a college preparatory environmental science class, but are challenging themselves and taking the step and doing the extra work that needs to be, that they need to get to the point, so they can take the AP exam. So you see the numbers across the board, and like we said, we can't compare years to years, graduating classes change, but the numbers are pretty outstanding. And that English Language Comp, those are those 11th graders who didn't take the part. And the other AP exams? Physics C, E, and M is probably, is considered one of the hardest of the AP exams. We did pretty well there. And our percentage of students attending college, this year, we're at four-year college, it's 84 percent, which is a jump from last year. Last year, we were at about 78 or 79 percent. So more of our students have gone from two-year college to four-year, and 93 percent of our students are attending post-secondary schools. And this is the end result. This is where the schools, where our students wind up. From K through 12, our students wind up at some of the best schools in the country. They really, they strive to achieve. We have Mawa High School students in about 24 different states. So from, not just from an educational or an academic standpoint, our students are walking out of the building and out of the district with confidence. They're walking out of the building with confidence that they can go across the country and be successful at other schools. In January, we was holding Alumni Return Day, where I have the seniors from the previous year come back, and they talk to our juniors and seniors about the college application process, and what to expect when they get out of Mawa High School. And the first question I always inevitably ask them is, were you prepared? Did you find that your education at Mawa prepared you for the college experience? And nine out of 10 will say they absolutely did. So our kids are ready. You know, from across the board, starting from kindergarten all the way up, between our community, the parents, our staff, our administration, our kids are rock-solid kids. They do well, they perform, anything you put in front of them, they will succeed in. So that's our presentation for this evening. If you have any questions, Kevin and I'll be around.
This is very impressive. I'm going to come to more of these meetings. Do you share any of these highlights with the real estate brokers in town? I mean, if I was a real estate broker, I would want this as ammunition when people came to me, prospective buyers. And I would say, oh, yeah, we have it good, and here it is, here's the details, here's the facts. As a prospective buyer, I would be very impressed with this.
We are going to post this on our website. I don't know if that's where you were going with that, I'm sorry.
But handouts, you know, that they relatives can hand to people.
Newsletter, too.
Say again?
Can we put it in the newsletter?
The whole presentation, no highlights of it. Yeah, definitely highlights of it, and certainly the end-of-the-year edition as far as where the kids are going, but not specific results. So the best place to get it, so that you have the opportunity to see it, is there.
16, 18 years ago, I'm an historian. We had to, the kids all signed up for AP courses, and they didn't caught on. They were signing up on a resume that they have the course, and they wouldn't take a test. So that's what we wanted to say, okay, sign up, you must take a test. But we were so, kids were not taking the test because they couldn't afford it. And we decided we'd pick up the tab on those tests. I hope we still do that. Do we still pay the test? No, we don't. Back then, we did. We started the practice of buying the test for them, so they would take a test. We've come a long way. I know offense was a league, a board member from Wayne, Raginaw, Herschel has six AP courses. I bit my tongue.
No, you didn't, Peter, because it's all over.
No, I did.
I think you guys did an exceptional job.
Thank you.
And in order to do this well, you need to completely understand it. But I can say that you understand it as well as your fellow administrators do, and they're the people that take it back to their teachers, right? And sit down and take a look at it and dissect it, and make the most out of what it is that we're doing, because we continue to do well, and because we continue to look at how we did. And I think that that makes a real important point. So, great job tonight. Thank you all. Guys, all my families, please, go see honey. Go, please, go. Meli, have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you can stay.
Yeah, I think you're good to go. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm not going there.
Great job. Do you have anything to say?
Anything to say? Okay, thank you. Mr. Fair, if you'd be impressed this evening?
Sure, I'd like to highlight item A, to announce a retirement of Robin Milawcer. She's the principal to the secretary of Joyce Kilmer School.
Secretary to the principal, yeah.
What did I say?
You said principal to the secretary.
Secretary to the principal. As articulated by Dr. O'Toro, the building principal, Robin has been the backbone of Joyce Kilmer School for the past 21 years. She worked tirelessly to support the students, staff, parents, and administration. Her ability to multitask, be a forward thinker, and give everyone time, which made them feel valued, is indescribable. We thank Robin for her hard work here in Mawa, as she will be missed as a colleague, but more importantly, as a friend of the district. The Joyce Kilmer family and the district wishes Robin and her husband Eric the best in their retirement in Florida. They're moving shortly. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My report this evening. I'd like to congratulate Roger Pell's here, who has been named Vice Peers as the Bergen County Athletic Director of the Year. So congratulations to him. And also congratulate Jeff Remo, who will receive the YMCA Special Achievement Award for Coaching. So congratulations to Mr. Remo as well. Board committee reports. Any committee reports this evening?
Paul Seeha, a committee meeting tonight, we're giving a homework assignment.
I saw that.
This is the 7,000 series. We're going to start reviewing these, see if there's any updates needed, and if there are, we're going to make revisions to them. We're starting with the 7,000 series and work our way throughout the whole inventory policies.
Right, thank you.
What is the 7,000 series cover?
Facilities.
Facilities?
Yes. Okay, anyone else? Yes, instructional?
Yes, instructional, okay. The Instructional Committee met on September 15. We talked about curriculum revisions, which are on the agenda tonight, Effective Communication, Theater Arts 1 and 2, Practical Psychology, and Financial Literacy. So those will be undergoing review and revision this coming year. And we also talked about, this past summer, as you know, we, the board has approved all of our curriculum, and many of them went through extensive revisions. And some of them needed to be done by supervisors. We couldn't find teachers to do them. So on the agenda tonight, we have Nikki Van Ness, Danielle Polway, and Joe Cozine also to be paid for writing curriculum this summer. We talked about book pilots in history class, in ninth-grade world history. The students are reading Siddhartha. It's an honors course, dense and challenging text. And we're doing two book pilots connected to Siddhartha to make it more accessible to our students and understandable. The books are The Heart of the Buddha's Teaching, Transforming Suffering into Peace, and The Yoga Sutras. And so Madison Hagar and Julia Gorley are going to be piloting those texts. In all social studies courses, they will be piloting The True Story of the Three Little Pigs, which you would think, how is that a secondary text? Actually, it's a wonderful children's book that actually teaches about bias and perspective in a safe, non-polarizing way. Those are our book pilots. They'll report back to us how they're going before it gets put into curriculum. You'll also see on the agenda tonight, ESL Tutoring. We do this every year. Ramapo Ridge and Mawa High School, we have two teachers at each school, 30 hours for the course of the year. We've, we talked about the Pathways Program at Mawa High School. This has been something we've been talking about since last year. These are connected courses and multiple career pathways. The program's currently in development. We're updating the Instructional Committee every month, and we're looking to give a report. We just met Dr. Shona and I with Mr. Pascal this morning, probably to the full board in January, is what we're thinking. And the last thing we talked about were the Parent Academy survey results. We sent out a survey in the spring to Mawa families. We got 354 responses from all schools on a number of topics. Actually, there was no topic that most of them had at least 7 percent or higher. I think that 7 percent was preschool, so that's a small population anyway. But, so there's interest across the board in anything we had to offer. Top responses were supporting students' social, emotional needs. 63 percent of parents said they'd like to see that. Curriculum topics, 61 percent. Technology, 56 percent. Preparing for college, 52 percent. And parenting topics, 45 percent. Our first Parent Academy offering will be mindfulness, which is actually rescheduled from last spring. It'll be Monday, October 16, at 7 o'clock at JK. And we're sending out proposal forms to staff in the upcoming weeks. So staff will be teaching those courses, as well as experts from outside. So Instructional Committee is always a lot of fun. Juicy stuff going on there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Board member remarks and additional comments on reports or other non-agenda items?
I'd just like to thank the Lauerwold family for their donation of $2,500 to the music program.
Thank you.
It's a very generous, sort of give back to the community that's very appreciated.
Yep, very, very much is, thank you. Anyone else? I just want to mention that digitally distracted presentation is going to take place at the Mawa Library on October 3 at 7:00 PM. And I encourage parents and everyone, even if you don't have kids, to come and learn about this.
I think they ask you to, or ask you ahead of time.
I think you could call and check out.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Old Business, may I have a motion to move Old Business? Mr. and Ms. Mavertish, second by Ms. Conoco. Any discussions on Old Business comments? No? Okay, we'll take a local, please.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Abstain.
Mr. De Silva?
Abstain.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'd like to move New Business, A through N. Can I have a motion to proceed? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Wenderkowitz. Any comments, questions, concerns? And that's good to go? Okay, you can take a local.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Now, we have New Business, and a motion to proceed on that. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Wenderkowitz. Comments, concerns, questions? Anyone have any of those items? It looks like they're good to go? A through Q. Thank you. You can go, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Conoco, second by Mr. Gallo.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes.
I have a little locker, 43 then to head place. Okay, two items. One is Building 5. So the inside has been completely renovated? That project is done?
Lots of it has been. Floors have been.
Okay.
And locker rooms have been freshman and varsity, but...
Okay, and the concession stand in the bathrooms are going to be placed outside?
No, they're actually going to be placed within the building. They're going to reconfigure some space that are there.
Okay, will there be access, will there be access to a family or a unisex bathroom when the renovation is done for that?
The current plans do not have that included. There's a separate bathroom for men and women.
Okay, but no unisex or no family bathroom?
The current plans don't have it included.
Okay. Second project, the T-Cubed. So where does that stand right now?
It's a great question. We're going to have a special board meeting on October 18 to only discuss that.
Okay, great.
Don't miss it, it's going to be fabulous.
Is there a football game?
It's going to be, we're having just one agenda item only, no action taken. So we're just having a special meeting for people in the public to come by and to take a look at a presentation, pictures, architects, rah rah, the whole thing, 18.
Okay, great. Mark in my calendar.
I look forward to it.
Anyone else? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Denise. May you adjourn? Thank you all for.